Good evening. The regular scheduled meeting in the Vestavia Hills Department of Education will come to order. Our first order of business is to approve the agenda that is displayed on this screen. It's been circulated beforehand. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Go second. On paper. And then we have the approval of the December meetings that are distributed beforehand. Do we have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved.
Any one second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we'll turn it over to Dr. Freeman.
All right. We have several recognitions tonight, and I want to start with the most creative group, the bunch, and that's our art students. And Jamie Marie Marlin is going to carry us through some recognitions of our students. Jamie?
Good afternoon. The courage to be creative is the one pillar of our strategic plan that we're going to showcase and celebrate today. Each year students submit artwork, and they are selected by their schools to the central office. And at that point, a group of people will make a decision about which pieces of artwork from our schools will actually be submitted to the state for the state superintendent art show. The annual state superintendent's visual arts exhibit is held during the months of February and March. There are two different divisions. There's an elementary division and a secondary division. And at this point, we're not sure if any of our students actually placed or won awards because we've just actually mailed that a few weeks ago down to Montgomery. But they will be on display. The artwork that you see here will be on display at the old Supreme Courthouse Library at the Alabama State Capitol. So we're very proud of that. So today, we recognize those students from our district who are now in the superintendent's art show. So I'm going to start by, we have, I'm so excited we're able to show you photographs of the artwork that was submitted. And so, what could you make each one? Marge, we'll start with, this is a Cubist self-portrait by Liz The Penstake Stakely. She's a kindergartner at Vestavia Hills Elementary West. Is she here with us today?
Mom is sick with a flu, so probably not.
Our next piece of artwork is entitled "Wacky Shapes," and it is by Charlie Colvin. Is Charlie here with us today? All right, Charlie, could you please come forward and to the front of the room? And he is a second grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary East. Our next piece of art is entitled "Vulcan the Great," and it is by Abby Thompson. Is Abby here? She is a second grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary East. Congratulations. Our next piece of art is "Kahaba River Turtle." Is Van with us today? All right. Congratulations. A second grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary Kahaba Heights. The next piece of art is "Lakota Dreamcatcher" by Ella Kate Miller. Is Ella Kate here? And she is a third grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary. Our next piece of art is "Vote on Kahaba River" by Isaac Plant. Is Isaac here? Oh, wonderful. And he is a third grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary Kahaba Heights. Our next piece of art is a mixed media piece by Brian McKean, McKean? And she is a third grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary Liberty Park. Our next piece of artwork is "The Whitetail Deer" by William Hoop. Is William with us today? He is a fourth grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary Central. Congratulations. Our next piece of art is "Space Stars" by Wells Chehaney. Wells is a fourth grader at Vestavia Hills Elementary Central. Our next piece of art is "Come Together" by Zoya Alizeta. Alizeta?
Alizeta.
Alizeta, I apologize. She is a sixth grader at Pizzitz Noel School. The next piece is a piece entitled "Beach Sunset" by Kate McGinnis. Is Kate here? She is an eighth grader at Pizzitz Middle School. Our next selection is called "Born to Stand Out" by Charlotte Clemmons. Is Charlotte here? Congratulations. Charlotte isn't here. These photographs don't do justice of the beautiful artwork. It's the best we can do to show you because these are actually already mailed off to Montgomery. But you're just so impressed with all of what these children have done. The next piece is called "Watching Over Us" by Ray Ding. Is Ray here? Okay. She is an eighth grader at Liberty Park Middle School. All right. The next piece is called "Camel Leopard" by Kellen Murch. She is a sophomore at Vestavia Hills High School. Congratulations. The next piece of art. The next piece is called "Rise Up" by Adam Waugh. Is Adam here? Is Adri. Pardon me? Is Adriya? Adriya. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. That was a typo, and I apologize about that. Is she here? Okay. Thank you for that correction. I apologize about that. All right? She is a sophomore at Vestavia Hills High School. The next piece is "Blind Eye" by Mallory Berry. Is Mallory here?
She's on the way from Craig.
Okay. Well, we will celebrate for her when she gets here. She is a junior at Vestavia Hills High School. The next piece is an acrylic art piece by Blanca Harga. Is she? And Blanca is a junior at the high school. The next piece is called "Around the Corner" by Hayden Garres. Is Hayden here? Okay, Hayden is a junior at Vestavia Hills High School. The next piece is an acrylic art piece by Blythe Danley. Is Blythe here? Blythe is a senior at Vestavia Hills High School. These students wouldn't be able to do what they do without, one, the support of our board, who puts in each of our schools an art specialist, an art teacher, and, two, the tireless efforts of the teachers in the classroom of these children. If you're an art teacher in our district and you're here tonight, today with us, would you please stand so we can recognize you as well? Is there an artist who's here that we did not recognize that is not perhaps on the list that I have?
Tate McLean.
Tate McLean. Tate, please come forward. Do you know if we have a photograph of that? Well, Tate, we are so glad you're here, and congratulations. Not good. Congratulations. You're at Vestavia Hills Elementary Liberty Park. What grade are you in?
Second.
Second grade. So wonderful. Congratulations. If you were an art teacher, would you please stand? I'm sorry if I missed you. I was trying to check this out. I really do want to recognize you myself. So if you're an art teacher, would you please stand again? I was getting a note that we had an artist. Y'all, thank you so much for what you do. What we will find out very soon if any of you made it to the next level of competition. And we just appreciate your sharing ideas for this. Thank you.
What did you pay?
I want to see it. Please stand. I want to see what it looks like.
Jennifer, I am so sorry. Okay, I want to make a big deal for this at another point. I'm so sorry.
We have a few other recognition to do. I'd like to get transportation coordinator Mike Varner to join us up here.
Good. Mike Varner's our transportation coordinator. As you know, he's been with us since like 14 years. And it's no coincidence that during his 14 years, and much of that time has been he's been doing mechanic work, conditioning, all of those things, and he took on the coordinator's responsibility this fall. But there's hope in it since then, 14 years he's been here, we have had a perfect record on our inspections from the state department. So for the 14th year in a row, just in this last month, we have received a perfect score with zero deficiencies on our 17 buses. That's really quite remarkable compared to all different kinds of measures to look at. But Michael's solely really responsible for that. And so the state department provides a certificate of achievement for this each year, and we want to make sure that you are aware of what goes on behind the scenes to make sure our buses are safe, in good condition, and maintained well. And Michael, we really appreciate that. Congratulations.
Now, Jennifer, I saw you back there. Come on up. Jennifer Brown. Jennifer Brown's the only person in here with a picture on the wall.
Lonely up there.
Yes, it is. Of all the many things Jennifer has accomplished, being the teacher of the year, I think, was certainly fantastic, and that's the picture of that a few years ago. But she's recently accomplished a new thing. And she represents now one of 78 of our teachers in our system who hold a national board certification. And that is a very stringent process. The 78 that have done it can speak to that. It was a very stringent process, and the national board standards are set, and you've got to meet a lot of criteria to get there. So it's not a cakewalk by any stretch. But it's something our state department has for many years acknowledged is an important piece of work. And any system that you go into, when you have a large number of national board certified teachers, there is a difference in achievement in that school. And so Jennifer took her gifts from the science classroom, brought them into the administrative team, and Dr. Burgess, one of his assistant principals now. So Dr. Burgess, any words you want to share? Jennifer's bad.
Jennifer's awesome. Her amount of energy that she brings to the table every day, it's just, it's hard to match, but she keeps us all going. And, you know, that's one of her tasks, is to keep me going and doing the right things every day, too. So she does a great job. But, you know, this is a testament to our other teachers, too, so they can see that this is still capable. It was just, it was a goal for Jennifer to do. She's not in the classroom anymore, but she still wanted to do this.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that because for administrative team, when you step out of the classroom, it's quickly dilutes some of the things that's necessary to be successful there. So I applaud you for doing that when you didn't have to do this. It's quite an achievement. Any words you want to share about this?
Courtney, you have that check, right? I'm just kidding. No, it was a goal of mine. I really wanted to be a national board certified teacher, and I started the process when I came back to the classroom. And then I took the role of the assistant principal, and so I have one component left to do. So I borrowed a classroom for a couple of months last year, and so I appreciate my colleague, Laurel Fuel, for letting me borrow her classroom. Fourth period every day for about two months, and so I finished it, and I'm just grateful and humble for the opportunity to have been able to do that. So thank you, guys. Thank you for recognizing national board certified teachers.
That may have impressed me more than anything when I started last spring and come out of high school, and one assistant principal's teaching a science class, and then one day the principal's teaching the science class. And so they're doing these things. And I think that's just so important to stay connected. So this is a big achievement. Congratulations.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you. About 20 years ago, a Vestavia Hills High School alumni stepped into the radio booth and started doing work for the city schools football program, the athletics program. And 20 years later, having been a play-by-play person and a color analyst, this evolved from radio into television, and eventually, and has now actually manifested itself into something that our students are running through the career program that we have. And I had the privilege this year of going up and watching students in action that actually run the broadcast. And then there were Friday nights where I watched it, so I was particularly thankful to have that. But that was a brainchild of one of our board members, Steve Bendel, who took this on a long time ago and has turned it into what I think is a wonderful opportunity for students who want to pursue a career in multimedia of some sort. So 20 years is quite impressive. This legacy for what the students are going to do is going to be even greater, I think. So I wanted to, against his wishes, I wanted to recognize you as part of the meeting, and thank you for the 20 years, and appreciate that you're still with us through the board. But that's quite a legacy, something to be proud of, and so we wanted to acknowledge that in our meeting tonight. Congratulations. And he's retiring from the 20 years run from that part, so we're going to be missing him. But it's in good hands with our students. Anything you want to share? No, I appreciate it. It's been a lot of fun. And Tyler, appreciates you jumping on board with it. And for those of you that don't know, we're now going to be offering a sports and entertainment marketing class at the high school along with the VNN crew. So it just gives, it gives our people so many more opportunities. It's incredible. And it's not just an ugly goof like me sitting in front of the camera, but, I mean, these kids are back there, they're doing all the computer work that I can't even text. But they're doing all of that, and Tyler's been up there, Dr. Freeman's been up there, and it's just amazing, boys and girls. And I'm looking forward to just sitting back and watching the Vestavia alums on national news and everything else over the years to come. So thank you. Okay, we can move into our orders of business. Item five is financial statement. Ms. Brown?
Good afternoon. In your board packet, you have the December 2018 funding statements and check register for your review. On the budget-to-actual report, I would like to point out that our local revenues are only at 21% of budget this month, or for December, compared to last year. We were at 32%. This is a result of the property tax money coming in a little slower from the counties than it did last year. And I've also checked with the city finance department, and they're having the same issue. He said he had reached out to the county commission, but has not gotten an answer yet. So, but we did get a large payment last week, so we still aren't quite caught up with where we were for January at this time last year, but we're well on our way. So that does look a little bit different from last year. But our total expenditures compared to budget from last year are in line at 26% of expenditures. And all board bank accounts have been reconciled as of December 31, 2018.
So the property taxes thing is really just a timing issue on the distribution of the funds? So it's not an overall receipt kind of change?
No, I don't know what the reason for the lag is, but like I said, when I noticed that we were so far behind from last year, I reached out to the city finance department. He said, yes, we're having the same issue. So it's not just us.
Are we expecting about the same or contrary?
Yeah, I projected a 3% increase from last year, so.
Board, I would recommend approval of the financial statement for December 2018.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Just one more? All in favor?
Item six, I would recommend the board approve consent items related to out-of-state and overnight visit trips.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation over the consent items. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Go second?
Second.
Any questions? No?
Speech and debate trips. I did all those growing up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Item seven, under business letter A, I recommend the board approve the resolution authorizing, making sale, and specifying the interest rate of the board's $9,65,000 principal amount special tax school warrant series 2019 dated the date of issuance.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
All right. What I just read in terms of recommendation, as you know, is for a construction loan, a term loan that will be financed for 10 years, and it's a bank-qualified loan that we would finance for continuation of our current construction projects. You might, you certainly remember as a board in 2016, when a bond issue, public finance was done in order to do a lot of the constructions taking place. Since then, things have evolved, one of which was the purchase of Gresham, the property, and then the construction we're doing on that campus as part of the master plan of the board. There are some additional things that you're going to hear about tonight from Dr. Martin relative to parking and traffic contingencies we're preparing for on those campuses that were not originally part of the work. We are replacing a roof that you've approved in a change order at Berry, so there are a number of projects that we need to do. I think the board's management of the projects have been quite impressive, really, when you consider that we've made it along the line with all of this work, and then we added Gresham after the issue. So this helps us get finished up and a few additional projects as well. I want to ask Courtney if she would, with any help from Canyon and Matt, to walk through the specifics of how we went through this financing to bring it to you tonight.
Yeah, so on January 10th, Matt with Raymond James sent out a term sheet to 35 different banks on behalf of the board for proposals for our $9 million of financing. Out of the 35 banks, we sent, some were local, some were regional, some large national banks. The proposals came back January 24th. We received 11 proposals from 10 different banks. And you have the bid summary in your packet, and you see that PNC had the lowest interest rate at 2.74%, and the range was 2.74% to 4.24%. So it was a really competitive offering that we had.
All right, and it's 10 years, we can do an early...
Seven-year call.
Seven years. There's no penalty on any early withdrawals, I think. So, Matty, can you read this?
Now, you know, usually we see four, five come back in. We had a really good result, and part of that's just financial position of the board and the job you guys do, keeping audits up to speed. And it was just, it was a really strong result, having 11 bids back in. So thanks to Courtney for everything she does.
Yeah, in terms of credit rating for the board?
Credit rating is still AAA. We didn't actually receive a rating on this issue. It's non-rated. So the bank purchases it as non-rating. It's non-rated, but the board's rating is still AAA, AA1. So we've got a little bit of a split rating, but that's, that's the board's rating. It's still, I mean, it's the highest board vet rating in the state.
Cambridge, our bond counsel, if anything, you have from legal perspective?
I would just add that this financing, like any financing by Department of Education in the state, has to be approved in Montgomery by Dr. Mackey, and this board has received the approval for the financing for Dr. Mackey. The resolution puts into place the mechanics of everything that Matt and Courtney have described, pure fixed rate, indebtedness, no possibility of variability or anything along those lines. So be happy to answer any other questions.
And just by closing, to be?
Closing will be February the 12th. And so between this time and that time, we'll be working on the particular documents that PNC will want to review.
I'll provide it for you, the financing and what our debt looks like when we add this to it, so that you can have that for your reference, and know that we've got fund sources to cover that, got a taxes pledge to it. So any questions you've got for the group?
Anything?
Only commentary I'd make is that I think it was a great answer for our community, is that when we started with the bond issue, our scope was this, we didn't have, Gresham wasn't in any way. We added Gresham to the mix, and to be able to get all these projects across the finish line and provide the kind of quality experience that our community expects, I think, is important to go in and knock it all out at once. And I like our ability to do it without really kind of stressing the system, too. That's good.
Yes.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B, recommend the board approve change order number four with Blaylock Building Company Incorporated in the amount of $305,122 for renovations for a new middle school, package B, building addition and renovations as submitted.
For the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Commentary?
Well, this is all Brennan's fault, so.
Is this going to do the public stoning? I'm not sure.
Fuck, I'm with you.
Brennan going to come stand?
The board has the list of those items, maybe just a break on some of the bigger areas.
Yeah, there are about 11 or 12 different items in there. Two of the big ones. One was the city parks and rent came to us with their request to put a baseball field on this campus. And that changed our plan in the rear as far as our parking lot, our carpool loop. So a lot of site changes to accommodate a future baseball field to sit on the campus gives the possibility to put that baseball field there and have parking and carpool around that loop. It's one of the big ones. Another big one was, you remember, we did some remediation activities early in this project. We found in that removal of some old drywall and stuff that the building wasn't properly flashed and constructed on some of the exterior walls, which was making the building susceptible to water intrusion. What we did was, this is a change to correct all those issues so we don't have leaks in the future. We could have done a patch, that would have been a cheaper solution, but this is the proper, correct building solution to get that building envelope correctly sealed. So those are the two big ones, kind of comprising these. Any others you want to speak to?
Just piggyback on the comment about the remediation. It's never a blessing to have to do a remediation of mold, but it exposed something that would have given us really problems with the building envelope had we not. So that turns out to be, we didn't expect it, but it will be a good thing for us.
And I know one thing that's attractive to me about the original parking loop, is the ability to get all that traffic off of Columbia and have a place to queue them. Does any of this impact that negatively, or does it still keep a nice amount of...
It's still have the same amount of loop. We actually increased the loop a little bit, made it a little bit bigger in the rear to get even more, more loop space, so we should still be able to fit everybody on the campus and not impact Columbia.
Anything else?
Baseball field's no surprise. I mean, we knew that going in, by the school. Yes, and there was at one time, there was softball field there, three tennis courts and all, and so we knew we had space to accommodate, but we really finalized details after we'd been letting projects, so we did a little bit of adjustment on the groundwork.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Item C, I recommend the board approve change order number two with Nearing Construction Company LLC in the amount of $92,793 to make cents for additions to Gresham Elementary School as submitted.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Commentary?
This was Dr. Martin's fault.
And Dr. Arnold. We can't let him...
We would like to have our balls.
This completes the HVAC project for the gymnasium, so they're looking at, I'll speak to this a little bit, my update, but looking to drop it for Canyon, I think, later this month if that's where.
Yeah, just a reminder, that's not a heated, that's not a cold space that gymnasium is, and so our friends Jefferson County allowed us to get in during the school year to do that and get that done and take care of. So this is the second piece of that.
So you feel like we need air conditioning and all?
Or showers.
Just curious, do you know how it works in Illinois? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, Jerry Dunn. Jerry is not running late, and he was...
This is excused.
He was in accreditation conversations upstairs.
I had to make up for David.
If you're concerned about Jerry being accredited in meetings...
You volunteered me for the anchor leg.
That's good.
Well, that can say we're messed up a lot.
We're on D.
Coming up here.
Item D, I recommend the board approve the owner-architect agreement between Blake and Associates Architects, PC, and the board for additions to Gresham Elementary School, package B, new loop road and parking for Vestavia Hills Elementary, Dolly Reed, as submitted.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Carpool.
Yes.
Carpool, that's for us.
That's why I carpool the party.
Are you happy, Tyler?
Yes. Thank you.
Can't they just drop off on Diamond Bridge and let them cross? Any questions? All in favor?
Item B, I recommend the board approve the copying charges for public records as submitted.
Heard the superintendent's recommendation, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is just a compliance piece with board policy authorizing the establishment of fees for public records.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item eight, I'd recommend the board approve the personnel actions as submitted. Item A, I'd recommend the board approve the personnel actions as submitted.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding personnel? Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to move to an update for you on some things that we've been discussing about to the construction. Dr. Martin is going to bring you up to speed on all things related to construction.
So, as you can see. All right, so I thought that I would buy a facility update as well as our transition plan as we're moving here into the spring. Starting over at Kahava Heights, it's been since October of '29 since we've been able to provide you with facility updates and just where we currently stand, so I think for the most part, board members have been over to Kahava Heights to see the new media center, the classroom addition. I know in talking to Dr. Hunsberger that they're very pleased with, with that site. Few smaller things that we need to take care of, but for the most part, the project is complete. We are in the process right now of completing this portion of what is Phase Two of the drive that goes around the side and the back of the media center. And you can see Phase One, which is the portion that is complete, that finance, I'm sorry, substantial completion took place on July 31st and we were anticipating substantial completion in late November, but because of weather, we've not been able to move forward with that project. Talking with Brennan, other members of HPM, it sounds like we need about a week correct for that space to dry out and then about two weeks to complete the project. So we're very, very close, it's just a matter of a couple of weeks and needing good weather to be able to finalize that project. So we're close at Kahava Heights, but we have just a little bit more to fill. In terms of the other projects that we have, you can see here, and I've just put a number of days, we are rapidly approaching summer, rapidly approaching when we're hoping that these projects will be complete. We should receive Dolly Ridge June 14th or about 143 days away from receipt of that facility from the Jefferson County Board of Education. In terms of substantial completion, at New Posits, the renovated portion, we anticipate, now, I'll show you, we're hoping that we can receive that facility in stages, but in terms of the overall renovated portion, being able to receive that, we're looking at July 17th as the date that we would have substantial completion, about 173 days out from current. Dolly Ridge, the 12 Classroom Edition, looking at substantial completion being around that July 22nd. Time period, 178 days from current. New Posits, the Band and Chorus Edition, looking at August 7th as our substantial completion date when we would receive that site, 194 days out. And then the New Posits Middle School Gymnasium, looking at October 16th. I believe it was October 29th, correct Brennan, when we bid that project, so about 365 days, we're very close to that. So about 264 days out in receipt of that gymnasium portion. So looking at this in the broad scope, looking at this for all of our project, those are the, about the timeframe that we should be receiving our newly constructed sites.
We're good. Meredith, you're good with contingency plans for your gym? B, C, D, and E, no thoughts?
And same thing with our band chorus. That's right. In terms of Posits Middle School, just, and I'll have a rendering up here, architectural rendering up here for our February meeting, but if you can see this site here, again, we have a renovated portion which is coming to us in pods, we have different buildings. So Building A, which is our building closest to Columbiana, is going to be where the sixth building is housed. The next building down is Building B, which is where our kitchen and cafeteria space will be. We also have our administrative offices in that space as well in Building B. Building C, we have a main level as well as a lower level and that's where our eighth grade classes will be, we'll also have some CTE courses in there as well. Let me just get back real quick to A, that will also house our counseling suite. So A will have the counseling suite, administrative offices in B, so they'll be very close to one another. D, that is where our media center is going to be, and I have a picture also, I'll show you, that is where our corral area is leading into band and chorus. E is the mural building, which will house seventh grade and some CTE, and then F is the competition gym, the existing gym, that space there. We have our band and chorus space, which are these two buildings right here, on one, I'm sorry, one building, two spaces, and then our final building G is our new gymnasium that we're putting, that we will have completed there in October. And in terms of anticipated receipt, like I said before, our hope is that we can receive this in stages, and so just to give you an idea of timeframe, and I put this up here as well, and I know Witt said that he would post this to the website, looking at as early as the middle of April to receive A building. B building, which would be your administrative offices, April, again, April 11th, mid to early April. Kitchen cafeteria a little bit later into the middle of May. Building C, the lower level, May 15th, the main level, June 25th. Building D, looking at the middle of May, May 24th. Building E, lower level, June 4th, main level, May 23rd, and upper level, June 10th. Building F, lower level, June 7th.
Did you just say something? I didn't hear what it was.
I'm sorry.
Siri, need to... I expect this from Mr. Dent. From Siri to chime in.
Let's see here, Building F, lower level, June 7th, main level, June 19th. Looking at Building G, July 22nd, and then Building H would be September 19th.
Matt, what would we do, like if we get Building A in the middle of April, what would we do with that while stuff's going on in the other part?
Well, the hope would be that we could work with Will McCall from the state and he would come in and we could do our final inspection, do punch list, and then be able to move into that site while construction's ongoing in the other portion of the building.
Got it, so pre-stage stuff?
That's right, yeah, that's right. That's the hope, so.
Got it.
Brennan had spoken just a second ago to one of our change order over there at Berry, one of those being the site preparation work in the back for baseball, softball and whatnot, and I'll show you what we're looking at in terms of queuing and stack and whatnot in the next slide, but you can see this is looking out, if you're, if you're standing here in C building and looking out the window at the back, as of, I would say last week, middle of last week, that's the space that you're looking at there, so that is current as of last week. You can see that? And then this, I'll come back to this here in just a second, but Band Chorus building is up in here and then that is our gymnasium space.
Patrick, when do we anticipate the, the drive, baseball field being completed, ready?
I would say that's, I think going back to the schedule, we're looking, Brennan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're looking April, May, correct, when we would have parking spaces and drive?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be done well before start of school, but it's, it's got a turnover date at the same time as the interior, so it's open for start of school.
All right, so this is an architectural rendering of what the front of the building will look like. This is looking down A building at the front, that is what it looks like as of about a week ago, so what it will look like, what it looks like now. Spoke just a second ago about the building, going back to Building D, this space here. This is enclosed right there in D building, if you walk forward from the corral area there, that you'll be in the media center. So that's the space we're talking about and I know I'm working with Ms. Hanson right now, we're looking at F, F and E, and this would be a space that, a sitting space for students, a visiting space, an open space for students with furniture and whatnot for them to sit, visit, talk, have conversation, some collaborative space for students there.
It's a lot more open space than we have at Posits now.
That's right. Current Posits campus is 130,000 square feet, future Posits campus is 192,500 square feet, so you're talking about a significant...
Good.
So again, contractor is Blaylock. Interior demolition in Buildings A through F is 100% complete at this time. New roofing work should be beginning this week. I don't know if that changes at all.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, that's sort of as of today. Footings, foundation wall, interior foundation block and backfill has begun to occur at G and H, and that's this space here. So you can see as we move into H building and G building, so. In terms of planning for traffic control and campus queuing, just have some metrics and numbers for you here. Current Posits Middle School campus has 149 parking spots, new campus should have 224. In terms of stack and queuing, we have, we anticipate roughly 7,150 feet of queuing, which equates to 358 vehicles on campus. So a lot more opportunities for parking, a lot more queuing space, and you can see, if you're able to see from this, this diagram here, four lanes coming in, two lanes around the ball fields and then coming back out to Columbiana. So you have that there. Now, in terms of Columbiana, I would say that Dr. Freeman has done, I appreciate the work that he's done with the county commission. One of the items that we talked about very early on in the fall was looking for the county to provide in-kind work to support us with our Columbiana project, and so that as of just before winter break, Christmas break, I think we secured that support from the county, and so we've started conversations with them as of today even to get that process going. In terms of Columbiana, what we're looking at doing is widening the road, having a turn lane in the middle of Columbiana, so a fifth lane, and then you can see, it's probably hard to see upon the diagram, but I know that some of you may have that in front of you, the light that is currently, you have two lights currently there, the southernmost traffic signal will stay, the next traffic signal, which is in the middle of the campus, will be moved down to that northernmost exit. So the one with the, the exit with the four lanes going in will have a traffic signal as will the lane, I'm sorry, the southernmost lane down here. So that's what we're looking at in terms of the Columbiana project and that's something that the county commission will support as long as... Any question on parking, queuing, stack or Columbiana?
If you're in 50 cars to queue up, that's a lot.
That's good.
In terms of our Dolly Ridge project, again, contractor on this project is Niren. As of last week, foundations, concrete walls are complete for the west and the south portion of the 12 Classroom Edition. Foundation block has been laid at nearly 75% of the building footprint. Underground utilities are being coordinated at this time, and then as we spoke to earlier with the change order, we're anticipating Saturday, February 2nd as when they will, when they will set the schedule for that there in the gymnasium. In terms of traffic control and queuing at Dolly Ridge, I'll speak first to Phase Two, so Phase Two at Dolly Ridge, additional carpool, loop space, stack and queuing, we've talked about HVAC in the gymnasium, parking and playground, and you can see the rectangle here where the playground will be with parking further down. Minimal front facade for the 1920 school term, we've been looking at coming back in the summer of 2020, addressing the front facade there. The concern there was several contractors crossing with our priority being making sure that we address carpool loop and parking, so that is, in the works to be done in that summer of 2020. And then landscaping, making sure that it's a, a fresh new site for students when they arrive in August of 2019. Parking and queuing, just have a couple of numbers for you, there are an anticipated 130 parking spots in the rear of the building where the playground currently sits, 82 within the loop where the playground is now, 42 to the west, so you can see here's the loop and then 42 additional spots to the west of that loop. 49 spaces in the front of Dolly Ridge with an additional 58 in what we're referring to as the island. So you can see in the front of the building, you have 58 possible parking spots now we have, that, that is an area that would need to be addressed. We have queued that up as an alternate to our basic package for this, for this project. 3,316 feet of usable stack space, which equates to 166 cars on campus. And so in September, we had done, just so you have some, some numbers for comparison, in September, we had done a traffic study and looked at east and west and what traffic looked like at east and west in September. Just to give you an idea, and this is over the course of the entire morning at east on a couple of days, one day or, or a couple of days, just one day, where I did the traffic study, 373 cars in the morning, 178 cars in the afternoon at east. No more than 70 cars on site at one time in the morning, and that was at 7:30 in the morning, and then no more than 111 cars in the afternoon. So current enrollment at east, 791 students, and so when you compare that with what we're anticipating about 750 students at Dolly Ridge, that gives you an idea just about how many cars will be on site. West, we were looking at 573 cars in the morning on that September day, 276 in the afternoon, 233 vehicles the most at any one time on the campus at west, and that was at 7:38 AM on Maryville. So that gives you an idea, we'll see, west right now, I have a current enrollment of 781 students. So that gives you an idea just in terms of, if we're looking at stack and queuing of about 166 cars, what our other campuses would like enrollments, what they're experiencing in terms of count of cars on, on campus. Any questions on... The city is also in the process of undergoing a traffic impact study, they're identifying small targeted areas that they may be able to address for improvement. Several of these areas are under consideration and may alleviate some of the traffic congestion for our school-related travelers. And I just picked out four, that, that, and that's what we have here in terms of pictures, you know, Dolly Ridge and Rocky Ridge, 31 at Posits is the next picture, 31 at Columbiana, and then Secret Hollow Row and Blue Lake Drive, so those are just a couple of pictures that you can see up here. So in terms of facility update, any questions that board members have on these four facilities? Last thing that I, I'll speak to is the move management side of this, so I sent out RFPs, requests for proposals. Those went out on January 18th. Over the course of the fall, I had been working with four move management contractors who had worked with some of the other systems in the area that have undergone significant moves from Pelham to Alabaster, Hoover, some of those other sites, so talked with the representatives from move school systems and then also talked with the move managers that helped support them. And so sent RFPs out on January 18th, anticipating a pre-proposal submission conference that will take place this Friday on February 1st. Submission of RFPs will be due back to us on February 15th by 5:00. And then Dr. Freeman will bring a recommendation to the Board of Education for a contractor of choice for move management services at our February Board of Education meeting. We anticipate spending March working with the administration and coordination and logistics in terms of how we'll handle the move come summer, and then April and May will be used working with our move management contractor to train and support staff for the move that will take place. And then the most important item, summer of 2019, our successful move.
Did you bid them all as one, like all facilities?
I did, you can see, yes, you can see here, so all three, in the language that I put in the RFP, three moves in one contract.
One contract.
Yes. Dr. Freeman, anything?
Yeah, we're tracking well, we've got a good plan.
This brings it to the time of public comment, if there is any. Please leave your comments to the agenda items, state your name and address and...
Mr. Boone.
Mr. Boone, yes, sir.
Mr. Boone would like to take less than one minute to compliment Dr. Tyler Burgess and the faculty and staff at the high school, with a special thanks to Kim Pruitt, who is heading up the RISE program. The RISE program is an effort by our youngsters at the high school to raise funding for cancer research, and I had the pleasure of attending a function Thursday was a week ago at the high school, and to say that I was impressed was an understatement. You would not believe the enthusiasm and the spirit and the unity and oneness of such a wonderful cause. My prediction is that that effort is going to make a difference, and that's exactly what we want. So thank you, Tyler.
Thank you all.
Mr. Boone kept that sound under a minute, Jerry. Did you have to over it and...
It's...
I didn't think there was any action on the under, I would do it only on the over. Well done, Mr. Boone. Any, any comments from the public? All right. We are actually now going to do, before we adjourn, we're going to do the executive session. So I have a little script here, handed to you, script. I will entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing possible purchase of the properties. Our request that Todd Freeman, Patrick Martin, Sean Tom... I request that Todd Freeman, Patrick Martin, and Sean Coleman attend the executive session. As to make the executive session will last no longer than 30 minutes. I have a flight to catch at 7:30, so it will not last longer than 30 minutes. While in the executive session, the regular board meeting will reconvene, no action will be taken in the executive session. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second? And Mr. Boone, can you comment on the motion for executive session?
You can do it.
Thank you very much.
It's like in 50 years, but he's now...
I was really expecting a 1958, the state legislature. So can I get a vote to move into executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will have an executive session.